Welcome to Voices in Action. Bienvenido a Voices in Action. Este es un especial segmento, un segmento especial que vamos a estar dando hoy día. Recuerden nuestros horarios regulares los lunes a las 2 de la tarde, ¿ok? Y abajo hagan clic y suscríbase en nuestro programa para poder ver todos los programas que hemos sacado al aire. Es más, les pido también su apoyo en donaciones y en patrocinios. Ask for your support with donations and sponsorship. Please hit like and subscribe so you can see us on our next editions. Have a good day. Good afternoon, like I mentioned just before in the introduction. I have the honor today to have Miss Susan Johnson. Miss Susan Johnson is running for the city of Conroe Council. Sorry, today is like candidate, council position number five, am I right? Number five. And she is trying to make a change here in Conroe. And we had her today so she can give us a feedback of her platform. And at the same time, this is how she'll live herself. Hoy estamos con la señora Susan Johnson. O sea, Susan Johnson es candidata de la ciudad de Conroe, del consejo de, en la posición número cinco. Y está con nosotros, este invitada y ha decidido hablar con la comunidad hispana para proponer su plataforma y darnos un poco a conocer, un poquito de lo que ella sabe y lo que ha hecho durante estos años. Thank you, Miss Susan. First of all, I always start, especially with the candidates, I always start like with the question, who is Susan Johnson? Why I do that is because I want you guys to be able to clarify from your point of view, what wakes you up in the morning, what makes you fight for Conroe, what makes you develop your platform? What makes you run for this position? You know, so the entire community. Yo siempre le pregunto, lo primero que pregunto a todos los candidatos es, ¿quiénes son ellos directamente? En este caso, ¿quién es la señora Susan Johnson? Y es para poder tratar de conocerla personalmente, que ella dé su opinión sobre ella y que no sea una tercera persona que le eduque a usted sobre ella. Así que vamos a ver que ella conteste.
Okay. Well, I have lived in Montgomery County twenty-two years.
Ha estado viviendo en el área Montgomery durante veintidós años.
We lived in Magnolia for fifteen years.
Quince en Magnolia.
And five years ago, we bought an old rundown house in downtown Conroe, a hundred and ten years old.
Oh, compró una casa aquí hace cinco años en el área de Conroe, en downtown. La casa la remodeló, era una carta, una casa de ciento diez años. Wow, antique.
Yes, yes, it was in terrible shape. So we had to completely remodel, put new, all new plumbing, all new electrician, electricity, everything.
Dice que la remodeló completamente, tuvo que cambiar plumería, cambiar techo, cambiar todo, electricidad, todo. Miss Susan, I read a little of your background. You had a wonderful husband.
Yes.
And you had four kids.
Yes.
Okay? And you had devoted yourself not only as a mother, as a wife, as a provider, as a caretaker. Because you had two kids that were, that were ill and they passed. Le pregunto que ella tiene cuatro hijos, de los cuales ella se ha dedicado junto con su esposo, el señor Johnson, a trabajar y a criarlos, no solamente como madre, como proveedora, sino como cuidadora. Porque todos esos hijos estaban muy enfermos y los dos murieron. Miss Susan, that takes a lot of guts. Eso toma bastante, bastante empeño, bastante fuerza, ovarios como diría yo.
Yeah, it's been an incredible blessing to have our family. I homeschooled my two oldest children. I have a daughter who's an attorney and a son who's a photographer. And then we had two sons, both born with very, very serious medical conditions like cerebral palsy. Basically, it's the condition that they had. We were told they would live two or three years. And our youngest Luke, Lucas, lived twelve years. Elliot lived twenty-five years.
Wow. Dice que la más grande de sus hijas es abogada, es segundo un fotógrafo. Después tuvieron los dos hijos, uno, los dos con diagnóstico de lo que le llaman cerebral palsy o es una condición muy, muy, muy del cuerpo que se conecta con el cerebro y la persona queda completamente frágil. Y le dijeron que a los dos, a los pocos años de nacer, ellos iban a perecer. Pero resulta ser que uno vivió hasta los dos y el otro hasta los veinticinco. So you were really dedicated, you know, a full-time mom most of the time.
For many years, yes.
Yeah. So after that, you became a Realtor.
Well, I was a Realtor for many years and then took some time off to raise my children. And I've been full-time again for the last twelve years. Had my own company, no, it's been seventeen, had my own company for the last twelve years.
Okay, that's good. Ella comenzó hace más de diez años trabajando en lo que se llama venta de casas, real estate, o venta de propiedades. Lo hizo por mucho tiempo, se dedicó a eso y ahora tiene su propia compañía, ya tiene diecisiete años con su compañía. Que, is that, that right there is winning, you know? Because you have your own, you're your own broker, am I right?
Yes.
Ella sí, ella tiene su propio grupo de gente que trabaja con ella para vender casas. What makes you develop the idea, well, you know something? I know the community, I know what's going on with the city of Conroe, I know the permits, I know everything that needs to be done. Since you're working in property sales, I imagine you are constantly, you know, bombarded, especially at the time of sales, with all the permits and everything that needs to be done through the city of Houston. What, the city of Conroe, I'm sorry. So you have to work closely with everybody in within the city. What makes you think or that it was a good choice for you to become a councilwoman?
To run for city council and hopefully to be successful in the election. So several things, several reasons that I'm running. I have been very involved in the community for many years, very involved with Chamber in Magnolia, the Chamber of Commerce in Conroe. I was the chair for the Governmental Affairs Committee for Conroe.
Okay. Le pregunté claramente que ella, qué la hace correr para la posición de concejal número cinco? Qué la motiva, sabiendo que ella trabaja aquí por muchos años, con nosotros, en la comunidad, vendiendo casas, sacando. Ella tiene que venir, como es broker, tiene que trabajar en cierre de casas, muchas casas necesitan permisos, trabaja con la ciudad constantemente, conoce a todos los concejales, conoce al mayor, ya conoce a todo mundo y al trabajar constantemente con ese tipo de cosas que la hace a ella tomar la decisión de correr para la posición. Me dice que ha trabajado muchos años con, ¿cómo se llama? Con, you said, you were working several years with Magnolia, no, you mentioned the advisory board?
Yeah, yes, so I was the chair for the Magnolia Parkway Chamber of Commerce. And then chair for the Governmental Affairs Committee for Conroe.
Governmental Affairs, ah, okay. Ella fue cabeza, la encargada del comité de legislación comercial en el área de Conroe. Ella estaba trabajando con eso también en el, con la cámara de comercio de Magnolia. Entonces, ha estado involucrada, tiene varias cosas. También este trabajo como presidenta del grupo de mujeres republicanas de Magnolia. Trabajó como este asistente de advisory en el hospital de niños de excesiones hospital. Como te digo, la señora ella ha trabajado, wow, certificada como, con la asociación de builders. Ha trabajado como, wow, that delivery chronic care program? Okay, ella era la persona encargada de conexión o de proyectos en el programa de Baylor College de medicina. Ha trabajado, o sea, la señora ha estado constantemente activa en la comunidad. I'm just reading a little bit of some of the things that Miss Johnson has provided to our community. She's, she's the past chair of the Conroe Chamber of Commerce, the past chair of the Magnolia Chamber of Commerce as well. And she was the world director, past president of the Magnolia Republican Movement, parent advisory for the Excess Children Hospital, twenty years, increasing share of the Conroe Uptown District. She's, you know, she works, she's certified with the Aging Places Specialist designation for the National Home Builders. Your background is extensive.
That's because I'm old.
No, you're not old. Le digo que el, la trayectoria de trabajo y de devoción de esta señora a la comunidad es bastante grande. Y me dice, porque me estoy poniendo vieja, le digo, no, no está nada vieja.
No, no.
You graduated with a degree at the University of Texas in advertisement and communications. Which, you know, that's, you know, everything that we do is just, we're there, we're out there. The communicators tend to be out there, which is good. And eventually you stood it, but I saw bullet points in your platform. Yo lo que vi que ella, como se ha dado como comunicadora a la Universidad de Texas y tiene un posgrado en eso. Las comunicadoras tendemos a trabajar con la comunidad constantemente y involucrarnos. Pero hay puntos, lo que yo me llamó la atención, en las razones por la cual ella quiere ser parte del concejal. El primero, para apoyar a la policía, a los primeros responders, que son las ambulancias, los doctores, no sé qué. Y también a los, a los centros de bomberos. The first one, you're supporting the police, firefighters and responders.
Yes, yes, it's essential that we have the best security and safety for the residents of Conroe. And Conroe is growing so fast that we need to stay current so that we don't get behind with all the growth that is coming. So we need to make sure that we are providing what's needed now, but then also planning for the future, for the firefighters, for the police officers, all their first responders.
Okay, dice que para ella es esencial que las primeras personas que están en la línea adelante, los paramédicos, los policías, los bomberos, estén equipados, estén preparados. Conroe está creciendo enormemente y automáticamente eso lo hace, lo hace como una prioridad para ella. Ella quiere que tenemos que estar preparados en todo sentido. The second thing is, which I love it and a lot of people are gonna love that, lower the taxes, lower the water rates. Ella quiere bajar los impuestos y quiere bajar el precio del agua, señores. Eso es lo que ella, how are you planning to do that? And that's a technique.
Yes, so the rest of the things that I mentioned, the bullet points, connect. The better job that we can do with creating an incredible destination, center for Conroe, for tourism and for the people who live in Conroe, to, instead of going to the woodlands or other places to go out to dinner, to buy clothes, to do all of the things. If we keep our sales tax here and we have more sales tax coming in, then that keeps the ability to keep our, our property taxes low, possibly even reduce the property taxes if we're really good about increasing the revenue that we have with the sales tax.
Ella dice que lo que puedes hacer es traer la economía de vuelta a Conroe, para que la gente no se vea woodlands. Básicamente recrear, que todo, que acá tengamos nuestro propio comercio, nuestros propios lugares donde la gente pueda comer, donde haya bastante turismo, donde se le invierta a la persona, este, una, un, se le plantee al país un turismo para que el extranjero venga, a eso, nosotros recibir mucho más turismo, más personas, para que trabajen en la comunidad. Entonces, se crea un presupuesto apropiado y entonces se pelea para bajar los impuestos, porque ya se genera el dinero aquí, entonces los impuestos serían más bajos y al mismo tiempo bajar los impuestos del agua. Perfect, perfect. Os dará eso que you're trying to, you're gonna try to be able to be, besides a councilwoman, a link between all the branches of the government of Conroe. That means you're gonna be communicating with everybody and trying to make sure that you have a, that's really more than you jumped. You don't know, you know what I mean?
Yes, but we can collaborate with all of these other organizations and groups, with them Montgomery County, other elected officials, we should be able to work together, which we do. There's a lot of that going on already, but I think we can certainly do better. And our city employees, we have wonderful city employees, but we do need to help them streamline the process, especially with building permits requiring, it is very difficult, takes a long time. There's so much interest in getting building permits. It may be that we need more help in our, in some of our departments. So one of the things I really think is important to do is to perhaps do an analysis of which departments maybe need some help and maybe which others, we could move some people around.
So create more jobs, that's what you're saying?
Possibly create more jobs and that's a huge part of it too.
That's a huge part, exactly.
What we wanna do, because now my children are older, I have one, my son lives here, my daughter lives in Round Rock. Many of my friends are wishing that their children would stay here and raise their families.
Exactly.
So we need more jobs for them to be able to do that. So when we all work together to attract really good tourism and also good employers in all ranges of employment.
Yeah.
Then that just, you know, the term rising tide raises all boats. That if we all are working together. Another big, one of the things that I've done that I am most proud of and learned the most was being on the parent advisory board at Texas Children's Hospital.
Okay, ella dice que, let me hold a thought.
Yes, I talked too long.
No, no, but that's very interesting because that has a little piece of, you know, what we need to know separately. Ella dice que básicamente está tratando de implementar diferentes conexiones con diferentes partes del gobierno de Conroe y Montgomery, que tendremos que estar enlazados. Esa es la, hay que tener una comunicación entre todas las oficinas gubernamentales de Montgomery y de Conroe para que se mantengan, que el cambio de implementar nuevo turismo, que el cambio de implementar nuevos trabajadores, nuevas compañías grandes que vengan, inviertan en Conroe. Automáticamente también eso desarrolle más empleos. Le pregunté, más empleos, sí, hay muchos, hay muchas posiciones o muchos departamentos en el city de Conroe y también en lo que es Montgomery, que necesitan ser revaluados, que necesitamos ver si necesitamos más personal. Ella considera que se debería haber también emplear más personal para ayudar a aquellas, por lo menos los, las cortes o vamos a decir, el área de administración administrativa del city de Conroe. Todo eso lo está viendo ella más para adelante. Esa es la única manera de poder crear más trabajos, es trayendo más turismo. Es como trayendo empleadores que vengan, inviertan, compañías grandes inviertan en Conroe, hagan sus manufactureras o creen sus trabajos acá automáticamente. Dice que la hija vive en Round Rock, en Austin, pero el hijo de ella vive aquí en Conroe. Y muchos de los jóvenes y muchas de las parejas que estamos viendo vienen a Conroe, nacen aquí, se crían aquí, pero se van a otros lugares a vivir porque quieren buscar trabajos, ya que aquí no lo hay, no hay tanto trabajo aquí en Conroe como debería. Ella quiere, ella quiere que se mantengan las familias aquí y que haya trabajo, que se provea el trabajo que se necesite para entonces crecer como debe de ser. Dice que una de las cosas que le ayuda ahora, que es lo que me acaba de decir, que voy a hablar respecto. Ella estuvo involucrada con el Texas Children's Hospital como una de las madres del board, de la junta directiva de esa organización, coge now, va a hablar sobre eso.
I am amazed by you being able to switch back and forth and that's really good. And remember the things that I said so that you could translate.
Thank you so much.
So the things that I learned that has changed me as a person and helped me really understand how important it is to listen to everyone and to look for ways to help and support people who are having challenges. Most of the families that have children with special needs or have had children pass away have divorced. Eighty, ninety percent have divorced. So many, many single moms are raising their children, their special needs children, or by themselves, yes. So I was able to, well, I was privileged to meet some of the most amazing women who have risen with those challenges and have done an amazing job to take care of their kids. And then at the same time, I learned that there are grant programs available.
For those women.
For those women, but also for programs that we could do. So we put together a group, when doctors do their residency, when they are doing their pediatric residency, we put a program together where they were responsible when they did their pediatric rotation to go to a home of a family who had a child with special needs or chronically ill child. So there's grant money, I'm going in circles here, but there's grant money. Now that the city has made the commitment to build the Oscar Johnson Community Center, we have an opportunity.
Let me stop you there. Oscar Johnson Committee Center, that's a community center for everybody or that like?
Well, it is, but it's on, it's on the southeast side of Conroe. So it's going to benefit.
It's gonna benefit, the community center is for kids, for adults, they're gonna have programs there?
Yes, so we need that center to be full all the time with everything that we can possibly put together to help families, to help kids who want to learn so they can get jobs.
Exactly.
Whatever's needed, so we're gonna have this incredible facility provided for the city of Conroe citizens. So there's some, I'm sure that there's grants available. What I wanna work, I wanna help the city find those, the grants that we could do, we could do more, we could do more.
Thanks, thanks so much, Miss Susan. Es muy importante lo que acaba de decir ella. Ella como trabajó con el Texas Children's Hospital, vio que habían programas, que se creó un programa en lo que ella estuvo allí. Ese programa agarraba y entrenaba a los doctores para que fueran a casas particulares de niños con necesidad. El problema es grande, muchas madres han quedado después de que los hijos se les enferma o nacen con defectos. Son abandonadas por la pareja, sea que hay muchas parejas o el niño muere y se divorcen o siempre decidiamente ellas quedan con el niño o con la carga más fuerte y el padre se va y deja y abandona. Estas mujeres pasan mucho trabajo porque no tienen las herramientas para poder proveer para su familia y al mismo tiempo tienen que buscar cómo este cuidar de esa criatura que tiene problemas físicos, sea cualquier tipo de problema físico. Automáticamente se le proveía mediante Texas Children's Hospital esta oportunidad de que cada cierto tiempo iba una persona a adherer a esos niños a sus casas. Ella dice que ahora va a haber, el city de Conroe están creando un centro comunitario que se llama Oscar Johnson. Johnson, el centro comunitario. Este centro comunitario se va a especializar para poder ayudar a toda la comunidad. Cuando hablamos de un centro comunitario, ahí van a ver, para, a programas para jóvenes, para adultos, para las personas de nuestra edad, etcétera, etcétera. Ella dice que hay préstamos o grants, vamos a decirlo como grants, como plata que da el gobierno para este tipo específico de asistencia. Y ella quiere que esos lleguen directamente al condado, esté en Montgomery y no solamente en el city de Conroe y que se pueda dar para que estas madres puedan tener acceso al centro y puedan también equiparse. El centro se puede equipar con los equipos necesarios para niños con deshabilidad. Si tienen que tomar terapias, si tienen que hacer toda clase de cosas, se puede hacer en ese centro y las madres tengan el acceso. That is amazing, Miss Susan. I never heard about that and that's something that impacts me and impacts the whole, the whole community.
Yes.
Because as, as you know, I partner with the Women's Center and we're trying to get those women that are already graduating from the views and they're going, they're going finally to their own life. They're looking for jobs, they're looking for tools to do things, all that stuff. So it is a very, very good idea from you and I really applaud you on that because we have to do this type of things. Then the other thing I was gonna ask you, is there's anything that you, you know, we always say there's something that I really like and there's something that I don't like. And I'm asking you that, there's something that you have seen so far that needs to be urgently taken off the list of the city of Conroe and rearranged. And there's something that you can say that is, oh, I like it, we're gonna keep it and we're gonna continue working on that?
Yes.
Do you have?
Yes, so that, that is what I have been doing since I decided to run for city council. I've talked to a lot of people, people who grew up here, people who just moved here and asked that question, what do you love about Conroe, what needs to change in Conroe? And I've been listening to a lot of different answers.
Le pregunté que hay cosas que uno tiene que tomar en cuenta, que siempre uno cuando va corriendo para alguna candidatura uno ve, lo que no le gusta es lo que le gusta. Le pregunto a ella qué es lo que le gusta y qué es lo que no le gusta. What is that you don't like?
Can I say what I love first?
Okay, va a decir primero lo que le gusta primero.
What I love, I have never lived in a community that, I've lived all over Texas, I've always lived in Texas, but that has like a city center like we have here. We have a downtown in Conroe. And then out from that are the neighborhoods and then we have all of these other amenities. We have the lake, we have the woodlands is close by. There's everything that you could possibly want to live in Conroe and enjoy within Conroe or within a very close area. And I love, I love that and it's very unique, there's not a lot of cities like that, that are like that, yes.
Dice que lo primero es que ella ha vivido en todos lados en Texas y que lo que más le gusta es el, la comodidad, el ambiente, las cosas que hay, el lago, el, la gente, la comunidad cómo está. La gente puede ir a Woodland, regresar, pues cómo se siente uno que está en el parque, o sea, cómo están, todo esto le fascina. Ella no lo había visto y se siente cómoda viviendo en esta área y eso es lo que le gusta. What is that you don't like?
That we seem to be disjointed as we're handling the very, very intense fast growth. You know, Conroe was number one, number two, number three fastest growing city in the last few years. We continue to stay in that top three and we're disjointed in how we're handling that. So I think the more we can work together with the mayor, city council, city administration and then the other people within Montgomery County.
Exactly.
Rather than silos, you heard that, all doing their own thing, the better we can work together to make it the best place to live, which I think we have everything that we need to do that, so I think we can do that.
Dice que lo que no le gusta es que pareciéramos que estuviéramos desegregados, cada quien anda por su lado, cada quien toma decisiones y hace las cosas separadas, sin darse cuenta que tenemos que estar unidos porque estamos por el beneficio de Conroe, el beneficio del condado completamente de Montgomery, que deberíamos estar todas las organizaciones, todos los que estamos trabajando en pro del bienestar de Conroe. Tendríamos que estar todas unidas, no separadas. Entonces, eso es lo que ella quiere que pase, que se unan todos, tanto el gobierno de Montgomery como Joe y la ciudad de Conroe. En vez de haber una segregación, una unidad y eso deberíamos ponerlo. Last words for the Hispanic community. Las últimas preguntas que le vamos a hacer es qué nos va a decir a nosotros, los hispanos.
Yes, so I think the percentage of residents is Hispanic, do you know the number?
A hundred and sixty-four thousand.
So is that thirty percent in Montgomery County?
In Montgomery County, a hundred and sixty-four thousand, yeah. And like voters are around, basically probably around thirty to thirty-five, probably forty. That was census to twenty-twenty, twenty-two. So we're talking about probably more than that, probably half of it, they are already legal voters.
Yes, yes, so we, we all need to, I think the most important thing that I can bring to this position is that I care about what other people think and I want to work with everyone to try to do the best that we can to provide, we need jobs, we need to support each other. We need to, Montgomery County is so kind, the people in Montgomery County and in Conroe. If there's a need that's made public or known, people step up immediately to do that. So I think we just, we need to do a good job of communicating the needs so that we can all work together and provide. so that we can all work together and provide just the best place to live, I think we can do that.
Dice que, lo que ella, me preguntó qué cantidad hispano, le dije que en el área de Conroe, Montgomery hay ciento sesenta y cuatro mil, básicamente según el censo del dos mil veinte, pero que ha crecido, estamos en el dos mil veintidós y básicamente creo yo y por las estadísticas que se han presentado, casi un cuarto, un poquito más de, un poquito casi llegando a la mitad, son votantes. Este, ella dice que lo que ella considera es que debemos todos trabajar para el bienestar, que ella que le den la oportunidad para que ella pueda ayudarnos a unirnos como comunidad. No importa de qué cultura o de qué religión o cómo tú eres, simplemente la unificación es lo que trae la fuerza para mejorar la Conroe, mejorar todo lo que es el condado de Montgomery y así invito poder tener una mejor calidad de vida en nuestros condados. Miss Susan, it was a pleasure talking to you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Le deseamos lo mejor, Miss Susan.
Can I say, yes, I would welcome anyone who would want to visit with me and tell me what they love about Conroe, what they think needs to change, I would, I want to hear, I want to know that.
Ella dice que se abre, para que cualquier persona se acerque a ella y hable con ella al respecto, que le pregunten qué es lo que le gusta de Conroe, qué es lo que le gusta de Conroe y que le dé ideas. Ella está abierta para el público. Thank you, Miss Susan.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
And we'll, you know.
Share my contact information.
Yeah, yeah, your contact is gonna be in the webpage. I got it all, I guess your WW, is that info?
I do, yes, my email for my, for my company is the same, yes, it's susan@jaypropertiestx.com.
Okay, susan@jayproperties texas, texas.com?
Yes.
Okay, punto com. Si quieren comunicarse de todos modos, teléfonos de ella, toda la información estará puesta en mi webpage, en Facebook, ustedes pueden entrar y buscarla y se pueden comunicar con ella directamente. Miss Susan, thank you so much again, it was a pleasure having you. Señores, nos vemos porque ahorita tendremos otro invitado, que pasen buenas, thank you.